Dr. Allen Moore. Dr. Fowler, welcome to the council. Happy New Year to all.
Happy New Year.
Sir, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Happy New Year. Welcome back. Hope you all had an enjoyable holiday. I trust that you did. Got an agenda this evening, a couple of pop-ups to begin with. One extremely timely. We have our own Military Affairs Liaison, Len Ramirez and Steve Jones from Naval Station Norfolk, to provide us some updates on what is the ongoing congestion now that's becoming an issue around the base with the return back from the holidays and also some external factors causing some backups. I also have a couple of staff announcements. We have some hirings to kick off the new year, so I'm going to announce those as well. We have a few longer presentations for you this evening. First, we have Dr. Paul Robinson with us from Rise. He's going to talk a little bit about Rise. I know many of you are familiar with that program, but they are also right in the midst of Resilience Challenge, so give us an update on where they stand on that latest challenge and moving forward. George Homewood with Planning is going to provide you all with a monthly planning update. The City Council Retreat Conversation we were going to have, we'll wait on that until next week. Met with the Mayor, and we still have a few loose ends we have to tie up before we bring to you a strong man to have a conversation about, but we're pretty close on what that looks like. We do have some dates for you as well, and so we'll show you that next week instead of this evening. And then we'll close with the council interest for the start of January. And then we do have one item for closed session, which is a disposition of property. So with that said... For... We will, yes. Yeah, we will. We will. Well, I promise the dates will be... I think the dates are settled. There's some other things we got to figure out. No, I think we're pretty close. I think we're close on the dates, February 10th and 11th, and I think we're good on that. Yeah. Okay, all right. With that, Len and Steve, if you would, thank you for being here this evening. Steve, we really appreciate you.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
I'm Mr. Council, City Manager and Staff. Before I let Steve discuss the specific actions addressing the traffic and the mitigations that the naval base is conducting, I just wanted to make a few opening comments. As many of you know, this is traditionally, historically, a period where we see, you know, increased volume of traffic throughout Hampton Roads as a result of the ships that are in port, the number of ships that are in port, as well as service members, civilians that work on the base that are finishing up the holiday period. Exacerbating that condition is also the increased security measures that have been put in place. As many of you might know, Department of Homeland Security just recently announced a increased security threat bulletin, and within DOD, under US Northern Command, all of the local commanders, including the Fleet Forces Command here at Norfolk, have been directed to implement additional increased force protection measures. Any public affairs concerns or guidance is being held at that Northern Command level, so that's not even held at the local area, and that's out of our control. Some of the frustrations that, you know, both the civilian and military are experiencing, getting in and out of the base as well, are being addressed, you know, at those local tenant command levels, and so Steve will be talking specifically about what they're doing. And we're also working with, you know, AMI, our Department of Transit, as well as Chief of Police, to help try to mitigate the issues throughout the city. So without further ado, Steve.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager. As Len said, we do have a good relationship. Some of the things I will talk about, while I can't discuss the NorthCom implementing the additional force protection stuff and conditions and measures in regards to that, I can address some of the things that Naval Station Norfolk is doing in the seasonal increase of traffic. Some of those are that we have seven gates, we have 39 lanes open, we're double stacking those lanes. We've extended the hours at those gates that are not 24-hour gates. There's two gates that are 24-hour gates, other gates are conditional use type things, based on peak use, and those gates are double stacked where possible. Some outbound lanes have been reversed to be inbound lanes, so there's... Everything that we can do in that regard is being done for that. Operating hours, as I mentioned, have been extended, closing, opening earlier, closing later, lane reversals. Teleworking has been encouraged between staff members that can telework. Some positions are not eligible for telework, but those that are, they're encouraged to telework. Shifting of schedules, staggering shift reporting times, that has been encouraged. Where possible, some duty positions, that's not possible, where that can be done, that is strictly encouraged, specifically on the civilian workforce. Communication to leadership with personnel in tenant commands in regards to encouragement of that has been encouraged, in regards to traffic laws and things of that nature. I know we've met with AMI, we've had, historically, we've had quarterly transportation meetings in that regards. In regards to this NorthCom issue, when that was notified on Sunday morning, I was in the office notifying people, AMI and Transportation's, the Transit Department was notified quickly, along with FDIT and Hampton Roads Transit, in regards to their bus schedules, because we do have a number of buses that come onto the installation. So anticipating conflict or additional problems on that, we started working those issues immediately. Working with the school liaisons officer, finding out our buses. We have public school buses that come on the installation, as well as YMCA, working those strategies as well, and what we would do with that to minimize the impact where we could and where we're allowed to do in that regard. Some of the other things that I will mention is the sponsoring of guests to the installation that has been suspended for the time being, for the future. 100% ID checks will take place in that regards as well. As Len mentioned, anything, any questions that, beyond what I'm sharing with you today, you can direct those to NorthCom Public Affairs, and I can give you that number afterwards, or leave it with Len, and he can have that as well. Can't think of what else. Just sponsoring of guests to the base, that's not going to be possible for the foreseeable future. So if you have any engagements with the Navy, try to do those off installation or telecom or whatever we can do in that regards. I'll take a question or two?
Mr. Fowler?
Steve, I have a question in terms of the support, marketing, et cetera, for use of car pools. If we had potentially dramatically reduced the number of sequele occupancy vehicles, recognizing that, you know, everybody's on different shifts, but they probably use somebody else in their command who's on the same time frame, is there an opportunity for that, or park and ride?
That has been something we've encouraged, and has been one of the largest gains in our group transportation aspects on installation. Captain Rosen, commanding officer at Naval Station Installation, has provided prime parking for those who use van pools. So there's no competition for upfront parking to the waterfront. If they use a van pool or use the share ride, they have, just submit that, and there's no cost to the sailor or to the civilian that's on the installation for use of that program. That's been the largest growth area that we've had for public transportation and our shared transportation, I will say it that way. The ridership on the buses, we don't have an internal circulator, and so therefore, that requires most personnel that are using that to walk several blocks. They're not going to do that in this kind of weather.
So, and I appreciate, you have traffic, so the shared and the van pool, but just, I mean, riding with your buddy or pal into the base, is there any way of...
There's no way of enforcing that. We can encourage that.
Is there any way encouraging to get that in transit?
That is encouraged. It is encouraged. The prime parking is a carrot that the CO has to offer, and so we've done that at our tenant command meetings, which are monthly. That is one of the things that is broadcast there. We've had HRT come in and present. We've welcomed the city and the Traffic Transportation Division to come in and present that as well. Our internal staff have presented that on several occasions to encourage that. We suffer it the same as, and we're not exempt from the delay, so we're encouraging anything we can do in that regard. Anyone else?
Mr. Smigel? I think it's Lester Steve, but you probably got my email earlier today. It's the worst I've experienced in 10 years. Being on council, I was late to work this morning, and all of my alternative pathways to get around where I, when this normally happens, I could not get through. So, and the worst I've ever seen on Granby Street, too, was backed up all the way to the golf course, and I've never seen it go down Granby Street like that since I've been here. My concern is neighbors getting out. You guys are, I mean, you're doing what you can. We appreciate that. We have to be able to respond as a city and allow our citizens to be able to get out of their neighborhoods and get to work. They will get impacted, but they can't even back out of their driveways just because of how our military, our side of military base is in neighborhoods, the way that it is in Virginia Beach. It doesn't necessarily, there's better entrance ways there. And so I know we got an email from one of our constituents, and, you know, before this even happened, I addressed some things. Just making sure we have police in some strategic locations. Bayview Boulevard and Granby Street seems to be one of the places where people are backing up that intersection, which causes the left lane of traffic. And, you know, our case is the military is pretty respectful, and they'll stay to the right lane. They know that they're trying to get there and letting people through, but when those intersections back up, that's what causes, you know, the continuation. And so I don't know how police is responding, you know, to this, and if we have the availability at some of these until this is, you know, lightens up a little bit. Same thing at Little Creek, at the Amphibia space, that's where I got hit this morning and had to turn around in multiple places and then try to go around the Granby Street only for it to be backed up. Just the intersections get clogged and people can't get through, and when the military's trying to do the right thing and get over for us. So I don't know. AMI, I know you guys are probably working, but...
Yeah, I think Chief Boone is at an event in Richmond and can't be here. AMI's group did reach out, then. AMI, if you want to talk real quick about the conversations we had with NPD and internally?
Yeah, absolutely. So they, I mean, obviously, we're monitoring the situation very closely and making sure that our traffic signals are working, but I think we can probably work closer with NPD and make sure that we're keeping those intersections clear as best we can.
Yeah, we have, we do have some streets that are very clearly designated, you can't cut through, and so what we've kind of impressed upon NPD is can we enforce those things? Obviously, some of these streets we can enforce, but clearly backing up into the intersection is going to be a problem. We're going to try to do that, and I think AMI's group has been out, both yesterday, and I'm not sure if they were out today, but we're also trying to strategically look at some traffic signal timings and whether or not we might be able to alter those a little bit to help prevent the backups into the intersection.
Today was worse than yesterday, I thought.
Yeah, that's what we heard. Yeah.
Mr. Thomas?
A question for Steve. I know we don't know when the increased force protection will go back down, but is there a date when we can tell constituents that there will be sufficient ships out of town that we would expect a decrease in traffic, or do we not know that, or just trying to think what we can tell people?
Day-to-day events change that schedule for the ships. That is something that's not private to me, and so it wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be... We share when we know, much like we're doing the traffic count scheduled for next week on Granby Street. We know historically next week is one of the heaviest loadings, and so we've scheduled that traffic count during that time period, and that's something we've worked very closely with the traffic group to schedule those type of things. Beyond that, we know historical records, but I don't have any forecast to the future.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Len.
Thank you, Steve. Excellent. Appreciate it.
Dr. Fowler?
All right. So we have a couple staff additions. Well, I should say announcements, not fully additions. We have filled our position for Chief Information Officer. Pleased to announce that Fraser Picard has agreed to fill the position as Chief Information Officer. Great example of, you know, the best candidate sitting right in front of you, right? I mean, Fraser's been with the city since 1994 and been part of the IT department, IT supervisor, technology manager. Really, I think what was the best thing about Fraser was he was key in the Open Data Platform portal stuff and the GIS stuff, and as we move forward in the city, obviously, both of those are going to be very important areas for the city. And so I look forward to working with Fraser in his new role, though still in IT. The other one that I'm very pleased to announce is that we have filled the Environmental Sustainability Manager position, which I know is a priority for council. And that position will be filled by AC Langston, and AC is here this evening, so welcome AC. So AC has a tremendous amount of work experience in this space. He was previously sustainability coordinator for Live Nation Entertainment, manager of corporate sustainability, most recently at Norfolk Southern Corporation. She earned her bachelor's degree in environmental science from Duke University, as well as a master's degree in environmental management from Duke University as well. So welcome, AC. We look forward to working with you. Thanks for being here. Okay, but then I want to move on. We have a great opportunity to have Dr. Paul Robinson from Rise here with us this evening. They had a, what I would, by all indications, say was an extremely successful round of the Resilience Challenge last year, and they've kicked off the next one for this year. So, Paul, welcome. Thanks for being here and look forward to your update here.
Thank you. Mayor, City Manager, Staff, City Council, good afternoon. Happy New Year. Thank you for the opportunity to let me talk about Rise a little bit. So my goal here this afternoon is to, is to tell you how we are changing our climate change challenges into job opportunities and economic growth. And I'll do it quite quickly. I think I've got about 12 minutes here. There's an awful lot of information I want to share with you. I'm more than happy to talk to anyone after the fact with any, with any questions. So clearly, this region, Rise is a regional organization, although we are physically based just across the road here in Norfolk. We obviously have some fairly focused resilience needs for the city, and we need solutions, but we're no different than other coastal communities around the nation and around the world. We also have a strong requirement, as the city manager has written about in his past role, for economic growth and diversification. And our role as Rise is to bring these two together. We're really an economic development organization, and I want to tell you how we're doing that. So we're turning our resilience challenges into economic opportunities. We want to be ground zero for our resilience entrepreneurship. So we're trying to bring together the entrepreneurial community together with our resilience challenges. And I want to explain how we do it. We've obviously, we have received a certain amount of attention in the past, over the past years, so as we've developed our programs, and I'm going to explain what we did last year, what we're offering, and what we're planning to do this year. So I'll talk a little bit about what resources we offer to companies. We'll talk about last year's, the 2019 Resilience Challenge, and what sort of solutions we found, and how the cities are involved, and we'll talk about what we're going to be doing next year. First of all, what we offer, we offer funding primarily for companies to bring their ideas to this region. Some of the companies are local, some come from outside, but they actually have to build and demonstrate their solutions. Not only that, they have to have a viable business, viable working business plan, and that's what we fund. This is not an R&amp;D project. These folks have to come here, actually put something in the ground, make something work, demonstrate the solution, and also demonstrate the feasibility of the business plan. So what we offer them is several things. Obviously, we offer them money. Last year, we funded six companies, a total of $1.51 million, and we've got $2 million that we're offering in funding for this year. Some of these companies are early-stage. These are small businesses. Some of them need a little bit of help in refining their business plan and their market strategy. We offer that. We're hoping to team this year with 757 Accelerate. We used some of their resources last year, but we can offer these companies the assistance and help pay them to get through that. So it's all about strengthening their, the viability of their business plan and trying to help them grow here in this region. What we also offer them is an innovation hub and test bed, and that comes with multiple pieces. We offer them co-working office space. We're located in Gather just across the street, and we have office space for them. We've rented a fabrication and testing workspace on 24th Street for them to make stuff and make a mess. We're offering them real-world infrastructure and pilot sites, and that's one thing I'd like to recommend, recognize some of the folks in the room for having helped us out with access to infrastructure and experts and information, making Norfolk and making this region very accessible to companies. They have trouble getting things tested and getting access to infrastructure in Philadelphia and Boston and New York. When they come here and they work with us and we work with the city, it's been very successful, and it's got a fair amount of attention. We can also provide them data and experts and stakeholders, help with the, excuse me, help with the technical assistance with the regulatory and compliance issues, as well as to give them a little public relations assistance. So having said that, we're offering them a suite of services. It's hard work. These are not, these are not handouts, and many of them went through it last year, and we're going to have more this year. We had 51 applications, and we selected six finalists. I just want to run through them very quickly, just to let you know how they're working in the city here. First of all, and these are in no order of merit or in any way, Building Resilience Solutions, that's a local organization. They have flood resilience retrofit methods for older historic structures. They have four pilot locations in Norfolk. Constructus Energy is roadway energy harvesting. They are doing a pilot program demonstrating their system with the Virginia Beach schools at their bus depot down in south of Oceana. Grow Oyster Reef, by the way, Constructus came to us from South Carolina. Grow Oyster Reef came to us from Charlottesville. They have a novel concept of oyster reef restoration. They have their oyster reefs and rivers around the region here, as well as up and down the eastern seaboard. They're really spreading out. Landscape Resilience Partnership, they're local, and they are helping to train landscape professionals to put green infrastructure in place and to care for it. They have pilot training sessions around this region. Resilient Enterprise Solutions, they come to us from Pittsburgh. They're developing a single-source financing, insurance, and home-raising capability, and they want to establish a home-raising academy. We're not quite sure where that's going to be in this area. If they receive our money, they have to do the work and develop the products here in Hampton Roads. Problem is keeping them. We can't, we can only do so much. So we're starting to talk to Jared and some of the other economic development folks and what they actually need, and they've started that conversation with civic leadership folks, and they've been talking about what they need in order to get, to be able to grow it in this region. And finally, InfraSGA is a local landscape architect company with an innovative urban retro bioretention system. They are developing pilots in Norfolk. We're working with them and the stormwater department to locate where and how many of those systems are going to be put in the ground. Yes. That's taking an actual house and raising it up to regulation height.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, well, they're trying, they're trying not to replicate that too much. So we are using Norfolk, we're using the region to actually install and demonstrate these systems. If they don't work, and some might, some might not, then there's, that's part of the attrition process. But we want to, over the past year and a half, we built this program. We brought in these companies. They're all under contract. They have been for about six months, and they're all working in this area, and it's a testament to the, many of the folks in this room who have helped to make that happen. We plan on doing it all again. We launched our actual challenge at the end of November 2019. We have a new set of challenges. This is our flyer that we're sending out. This has a laser on it, maybe? Yes. So on the right, on the right-hand side, these are five challenges in five separate areas that we have. We source the local problems, the local issues, the flooding issues, the infrastructure issues. We source them out to companies looking for, again, we're looking for solutions. And on the left, we have one specific one. We're trying to do some fairly focused ones where we're looking for a specific solution, so-called our Urban Mobility Challenge. We have $500,000 to support that one. That's really where we are starting. We want to bring real-time flooding information into smartphone mobile app for drivers like Waze or like Google Maps, that sort of thing, but to bring in a real-time weather and flooding information system to help drivers navigate around the, navigate around the region. I'd like to shout out to Kyle Spencer, the Resilience Office, who's been very helpful technically in helping us set this up, and we've also got some great partners that he's helping us work with. We've obviously got the City of Norfolk and Virginia Beach, but the City of Miami and the City of Houston are also partners in this. They want this solution, too, and they want, they want it to be demonstrated here, and we want the companies that come in and build the solution to this to have a bigger market. So we're trying to bring in, we're talking to some other cities. We want them to be involved, too. Old Dominion's always been a good partner to us, and we have Esri and Waze that are industry leaders in the field, and the port has been very helpful, including Centara and Vim. So we've really got some support from the local stakeholders here. So this is what we've launched. This is what's going out every day of the week for the next three months to try and bring in these teams and to provide them with the assistance in order to grow businesses and to bring them to this area. Finally, what we're also, we plan on rolling out some more challenges after we get past this. The due date for the submissions here is April 1st. Guess that might have been a bad date to pick for these solutions, but after that, we want to do some more focused challenges coming up. We want to do a first-floor elevation mapping challenge, to try and get citywide first-floor elevation maps produced at affordable amounts. So we're starting to build up that challenge, what the requirements are. Next one is low-cost backflow prevention. When we have high tides flowing up through the stormwater system, that's still a problem. And the interesting thing about these two problems, and in fact, the next one I'll show, is that these are problems for all the cities in this local area. If we can aggregate the demand, so it's not just demand for one city, we've got a huge market for solutions here. That's very attractive to small businesses. If we can bring them in, say, if you can, if you can solve this, if you can get over this bar, you could have a market, a fairly sizable market, and that helps them grow and helps them grow beyond this area. We also have a Need for Circular Economy Challenge, where there is an awful lot of plastic and garbage that gets into the stormwater system that degrades its effectiveness, so we're starting to look at that as a challenge. So we've got a ways to go here. This is going to be a busy year for us, and I just wanted to explain to how we're doing it and what we're doing. Thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Robinson, hi. How are you? I just have a couple of questions. On the PowerPoint, Building Resilient Solutions and Infra?
SGA.
Yeah, SGA. You said that they were located in Norfolk?
Yeah.
There are pilot programs throughout Norfolk?
These are companies. They're actually, they're just small businesses.
Where are they located? You can just say.
I will, I will.
Send it to me.
Yep.
And the other question that I have, when you were talking about the urban mobility, does Norfolk Emergency Preparedness, are they a partnership in getting some of this information out in our IT department? You mentioned apps, different apps, ways to notify citizens and everything, so is our Emergency Preparedness Department a partner with you?
So the goal is... So the, the goal is to, to provide solutions for the emergency management system, for public transportation, for private drivers and commercial drivers. So we are, we're engaging in a number of stakeholders, and we've spoken to some of the folks. The emergency folks are a part of this too. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, man, appreciate it. Okay. Next up, George Homewood with Planning is going to come up and provide a little monthly update. This is going to cover some of the topics that you're going to see on the fourteenth and possibly on the twenty-eighth coming up for a vote. George, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Alexander, members of council, Dr. Filer. Happy New Year to, to all of you. So I'm going to run through a couple of things real quickly that are, are going to be coming up. First is St. Paul's. Wait a minute, before I get into St. Paul's, I'd like to, to introduce to you all if you have not already met, Mr. John Major. He is the Vice President of Development for Bryn Shore, and in that role, he's the project manager for Bryn Shore's work in the St. Paul's quadrant. So he is becoming our partner as we, we move forward in this. So, St. Paul's, two blocks. We call them Blocks nineteen and twenty. They're directly across Wood Street from the St. Paul's apartments that were developed by Nussbaum and opened about a year ago, and they straddle Posey Lane. So Block nineteen is focused on senior housing, seventy units with some non-residential on the ground floor. Block twenty, which is the one that was between Posey and what will be a slightly relocated Church Street, is a hundred and twenty units with commercial on the, the first floor. And the other thing that's being developed as part of the first floor is a community room that'll be available for the community to use for meetings and, and whatever. That'll be part of the, the Block twenty building. So start with Block nineteen. This came to you originally from the Planning Commission in April, I believe, and at that time, the decision was made to, to press pause on it so that Block twenty could catch up and that they could both be considered at the same time. And the, the building, as you can see, is pulled to, to Wood Street, and the, the public and commercial space is there on the first floor along Wood Street. The surface parking is to the side and the rear, and next to the fire station and then the bus transfer station. There's a raised crosswalk that joins this to the bus transfer station, and yes, there are elevators in the building to, to serve. Again, it's an elderly component, so you would all, you would certainly have to have that. So these are the elevations for Block nineteen. The Posey is at the top, and Wood Street is, is the lower one. Combination of brick and, I, I, I don't want to use the brand name, but, you know, cementous siding. So highly resilient materials, as, as well as, you know, metal and, and those kinds of things. So that was all part of the, so both of these projects have been through the Architectural Review Board. Both the projects were beaten up pretty good by the Architectural Review Board, so what you see is a result of, of, of all that, that work together. Well, Mr. Thomas set the, the bar for beating up on developers, well, on the ARB. Block, Block twenty is, is the larger of the two blocks. As I said, it's a hundred and twenty units. This is a, this is a, both of them are being done as a Lytec project. This one is, has more of a general market approach, not, not an elderly approach. And the, so as you can see, there's a combination of one, two, and three-bedroom units there, you know, so it, they will appeal to, to family units as well as to, to singles and couples. The, again, this one's pulled up to the street. There's a little bit of an oddity here that I want to point out. So Fenchurch Street today comes through here, and in the St. Paul's plan, Church Street, Fenchurch Street goes away and becomes renamed Church Street, which comes all the way through and goes all the way down to the church. And so there's a slight realignment going on here at Church Street. This building will come up out of the ground before that realignment can be completed. So we're, this, this area here is being devoted to a plaza that will have public art and provide outdoor dining space and to, and, and serve the commercial that's here along Church Street. So it, it looks a little, looks a little different now than what it will look, so just wanted to make sure folks are aware of that. So I believe that we, we've got something really cool, we hope, that works. It's a flyby, and, and if we can get that to work, Kim, this, we hope to be able to present to you for every part of St. Paul's going forward, so you'll be able to, to see it. We're developing a three-dimensional model of what the, of the St. Paul's master plan so that you all can fly through it and drive through it and understand, you know, the relationships of things to one another. So we've just turned the corner from New Church Street on to Transit Boulevard, which is the new entrance that serves the, the bus transfer station. And now we're turning that corner again on to Posey. And so Block twenty is, is to the left. Block nineteen, you don't see it. It would be to the right as you come up Posey. Now we're about to turn the corner on to Wood Street. Wood Street is a very long frontage for this building, and the Architecture Review Board and staff and the developers have spent a lot of time working on trying to make this look like at, at, at a neighborhood scale rather than sort of this massive structure extending along the, the street. So, you know, it's, it's probably not absolutely perfect, but we think it's very, very good. And so that's, you know, and again, we hope to be able to, to let you fly through all of the projects and all the parts of St. Paul's going forward. So.
So George, just a quick question. What's the timing of all this?
What's the timing of all this? Really, really, really tight. As, as I think you all know from the, the CNI, we have to get everything done in a really short period of time. So these projects, the, they will be, the, the applications for Lytec funding will go in this year. The funding decision will be made sometime later this year, and they will break ground either late this year or first part of, of next year and be underway.
When will, when will we move in ready?
Twenty-two? Twenty-two.
Okay, Mr. Riddick, then Ms. McCullough.
These are not, these are city-owned properties right now, those are property.
Yes, sir. Those, these properties are part of the former downtown plaza.
Okay. Is the developer paying for the property?
I don't know that answer, sir.
If, if he is not, then, if they are not, then they need to. I think when we did St. Paul's, the apartments up front, they, they paid for the property, and I just don't see any reason why this group should come in and walk away scot-free. So if you could give me that answer, and then, and then we need, as a council, we need to get them to pay for the property, and put it in, just give it to the school district or something, so their guys can't come in and continue to fill their pockets, and we don't get anything for it.
Okay. I made a note. I'll, I'll get back to you on that. I do not know the answer to that.
Ms. McCullough.
I'm assuming that all of these are going through the new zoning code and the new resilience quotient and all of the elements, they're all building?
Yeah, and.
Parking lot and all of that, pavement.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And I, maybe I should remind you all that we adopted a, what we call a floating zone for St. Paul's, so that it, it has all of the criteria for each of the building's performance standards, development standards, form standards. All of that is in that, that floating zone, and we are rezoning these block by block as they come to you, as well as they go through the Architecture Review Board for a development certificate. And in both of these cases, there's also conditional use permits that are required because each has more than twenty-four units. So all of that, they're, they're going through all of that, and then all the, the resilience quotient and the stormwater management requirements and all of the other things that, that apply everywhere in the city apply here as well.
Ms. Johnson.
I don't know if George can answer this, but I would like an update on the replacement housing for our residents and a, another update on the People First initiative.
We have both of those coming scheduled for, I believe it's February. We're having a People First that's coming in February. Yeah, and this is part of replacement housing. It's not all of replacement, but this is part of replacement housing.
Yeah, we can get you, council, we can get you for these two particular projects, the numbers for those. Okay, that's fine. You can get it from council. But there are specific numbers in both of these projects.
Mr. Riddick?
Yeah, I'm, I just want to reiterate, you know, we, we got small contractors that are being held hostage with gym lots, and so these developers, this Bryn Shore, they have, they have a local brand on the e-jawn, and I, I want to see that this property, the assessment of it, one piece at the end of Church Street, we paid a million dollars, it used to be a doctor's bill, we paid them a million dollars for that, and I just don't believe that we should let Bryn Shore come in and walk away. They're not, you know, anybody, we couldn't get anybody to do that favor for us, and this guy or this group comes in, there's no minority participation. If there is, it's just a small amount. And so I know most of you council members believe that I'm blowing smoke, but I'm not. I'm not, you know, and, and Kenny, please, from this point on, don't associate me as like being the vice chair of this or co-chair this, because when the dust clears, I don't want, I don't want my name written in history, you know, because you're all going to be embarrassed when it comes back, you know, so. So if you could just find out, Chip, what the property is worth, and if they can't pay for it, then we go back and find another developer.
Mr. Riddick, make sure I understand, the property, you talked Block eighteen?
And nineteen.
And nineteen.
Eighteen, it used to be the medical building that all the, you know, African-American buildings were in.
Five, five, right.
Generally, as a part of the CNI grant, HUD does not require that the developer pay. It is part of the city subsidy for the project, that is my understanding. It is not outlined in the CNI grant application that the developer pay. However, there is, will be a formal lease arrangement that the developer will pay for, pay the city back once the project is complete. But the entire CNI, we have permission from HUD to move forward with these two projects. NRHA and HUD are still nailing down the last few tenants of the grant to get full and complete grant approval and get that closed, but that's generally the, my understanding of the requirement with regard to payment for the land. That's the city subsidy, and that there is that a lease of some sort that will be negotiated after the project is complete, but we can work through that with NRHA and with Burner and get that.
Information.
Yeah, get that information back.
So this, this is not HUD property?
It's not HUD property, but it is part of the CNI grant. It is part, it's, it's within the boundaries of the CNI grant, so it falls within the guidelines that are required by HUD for us to obtain that thirty million dollars.
Yeah, I think.
I think we need to check, I need to check.
We will. Yeah, we will. In fact, in fact, probably, I think, at the, at the retreats, so one of the things we had talked about is having a in-depth conversation about where we are on everything at the retreat.
Because some time ago, we were talking about it on Rena, and we were doing everything we could do to stay on the outside of HUD's boundary, and this would have been a part of it.
Yeah.
But let somebody check on it.
Yeah, we can check.
And find out, you know, and, and let's get some money for it. Give it to the school district, give it to anybody, but I just can't see these guys coming in here, not using minorities, taking all of this money back to Chicago or wherever they're going.
Yes, we can look into that.
Thank you, George.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not done yet.
We got a few others.
I just got a couple of others. I'll be real quick, sir.
Before you finish, I just want to say thank you to the team, the St. Paul's team. I can't say it enough. You guys have worked really, really hard. We've got Susan here, and we've got Marsha here as well, from the city who work on St. Paul's all the time, so thank you.
So just so you know, this, this slide says that it's coming to you next week. It's not. I apologize. We, we didn't follow through on the paperwork the way we needed to, so Block nineteen didn't get advertised properly, so we're going to put both of them to you together on your twenty-eighth agenda so that you'll be able to vote on them together, which has been the plan all along, and I apologize for, for us not quite meeting the mark that we should have met.
And just when I was thinking of you for all your hard work.
We still work hard, but we just missed the mark. I just want to point out one other item that's coming up. This is on the Planning Commission agenda this month, and it's, it sounds really, really scary, but it's not. This is a, a, a medical waste transfer facility that is proposing to, to locate in the Norfolk Industrial Park, and, you know, bottom line is, if we're going to be the, the center for medical technology and, and delivery of medical services in, in Hampton Roads, this happens to be one of those necessary ancillary things. This company will, collects the, the medical waste from all of the, the local hospitals, and, and it's restricted to the region. All the, the hospitals in the region bundles it together, and then it is shipped to the medical waste incinerator facility that's in Petersburg in, in bulk, and that's what this is. It sounds scary. It's, it's not, and it's, happens to be one of those necessary things for, for the success that we have as being the, the center of, of medical service delivery in Hampton Roads.
George, what kind of updates to the facility are they going to have to do? Are they currently there to just expand them? What is that? I mean, because it does kind of sound scary. So what do they have to do to make sure it's not scary?
Yeah, so it, as you might imagine, it's heavily regulated. They currently are located in Moyoc, North Carolina, and they want to be closer to the, where most of the, you know, what they're servicing, which happens to be mostly Centerra here in Norfolk. And so the, their, the building is currently occupied by a flooring contractor, and that flooring contractor is going to, to remain in twenty-five percent of the building, and then the other seventy-five percent is going to become this facility. What it is, what they, happens is the medical waste comes in and it's divided into, it's essentially sorted into bins. Those bins remain closed at all times, and they remain inside at all times, and then when the, the bin of a particular type of, of medical waste is full, it's trucked up to, to Petersburg and disposed of at the, in the certified facility there. That's all I have, Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Johnson.
Do we have to consider the, the traffic design for the, the facility?
Do we have to consider the traffic design for the facility here?
No, no. It's in an existing industrial park.
I understand that it's...
And it's outside of the distance limitation that we established for considering a special, considering the traffic pattern. However, it's a conditional use permit. If you would like us to provide you information about where the trucks are coming from, we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, George. Okay, so about the council retreat, just February 10th and 11th for now. I think we also saw here, we're probably going to add some material on St. Paul's and a deeper update. So let us iron out the actual agenda here and we'll get back to you.
Where will we be?
With it. We have to... We have all those logistics yet. Yeah, we'll get all that to you maybe next week at the 14th. But if not, then for sure on the 28th.
So it's not at the new hotel, the Glass?
We're looking at a number of different locations right now. We're looking at about four or five different locations. I think, you know, we have a list that we're going to go through and then try to bring to you some options.
And just for those of us who have to submit leave for that day, the second day is always a weird day in which I never know how long we're going to stay. So if we could make sure that we have an actual time that we're going to leave on that day out, because we do personnel stuff on those days. And so if we... That way I can submit the appropriate leave for... What? You know, I can go back to work. I can't. If we... If we're done at 12, I go back to work. It's a process to get my leave back. So I'd rather get it right in the beginning.
Okay, we'll do that, sir. Yeah. We'll do our best to try and figure out what the schedule looks like specifically on the 11th.
Okay. All right.
All right. So to close things out, we have council interests, sir.
All right. So we'll start with Ms. Johnson and work our way around.
I'm good. I have a meeting with the man.
Oh, excuse me. All right. All right, Ms. Graves?
I'll see him in two weeks. I'm good, too.
All right. Mr. Smigel?
I've taken care of everything via email.
Wow, okay. Ms. Doyle?
I'll be the first. I'm happy to do it. Recently, I got a call from an individual who manages a property on 21st Street. And what the challenge is, is on 19th, 20th, and 21st, we have a significant or a considerable homeless challenge and opportunity. And I think with compassion, we need to look at this. But we also need to look at solutions of how they are disrupting the neighborhood. This is a commercial area. This is not people living there. These are not homes. So I'd like to work with the administration about what we can do to address the need to help the homeless that are often permanent residents there and the danger that some of the activities that are taking place next to commercial businesses that I got a call on. And I think we can do this in a very solution-oriented way. But I personally, over the weekend, ran near this area. I use my runs and bikes to see what's happening when I get calls like this. And a business owner actually walked me back into an area that is really vulnerable. And we need to get it fixed. So I'd like to have that addressed.
Okay, well...
I can give you more details.
Yeah, so let's follow up and give me some specifics. And we'll get with staff and see what we can do.
Okay. Ms. McClellan?
My two issues revolve around the environment. I'm glad AC is here. Thank you. That's awesome. Good job. We... When we went through the renegotiation with TFC last year on recycling, there's a lot of concern that people, and continues to this day, people do not know what can be recycled and what cannot. And in talking with TFC, they said that they had money available for the city for marketing and education. I would like to see a plan for how that's being implemented, because I don't think... I don't see it. And I'd like to understand how it is. And I think maybe we could optimize it, because I think we all recognize we could improve on our recycling rates and contamination here. And also would challenge the city, which employs 5,000 people, to do a better job recycling internally or maybe to do it at all. It would be a good start. Start little baby steps. So anyway.
Councilwoman? If I may say, we said as a council that we would be committed to teaching our citizens and that we would start with the schools. And I'm in agreement with Councilwoman that we do need to have a plan, because we're still waiting to have that partnership with the schools. And in April, the Elizabeth River Project, we will be doing our Resiliency Summit again this year, our second annual one. And the scholars will be involved, heavily involved with that, along with providing some opportunity for the innovations that they bring to the Elizabeth River Trail at this conference that's going to be held in April to see how we can help with that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
The second... Ms. Johnson, you'll know this one. I'd just like to get an update on the C-PACE financing.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we're in our, I think, third year of asking for it. Can we get that button up here in the first quarter?
We're close. We're very close, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And so my short answer to you is yes. I think we can get that button up.
So for those who are watching, C stands for Commercial Property Assessment Energy. It's a financing tool for property owners that deals with renewable energy, energy efficiency projects, and also stormwater resilience projects. And I think it would help to incentivize our property owners to improve. So I'd like to think about that. And the last thing is just to my colleagues, and you'll be getting more information about this. We're going to be hosting the fourth annual Engage Norfolk 2020 on February 9th at Norbeev High School, again, from 1:00 to 5:00. And you'll be getting some information about that this week. So to get lots of folks out there again this year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Riddick?
Yeah. I guess at the retreat, I'd like to see us talk about committees again. And I think I'm thinking about the school district. We have a dysfunctional school district, dysfunctional school board. I believe that we have a couple of council persons who had a relationship, because we have a funding platform now that gives them just about everything that they want. But we're not getting any results. So I think this is something that we probably need to look at. More importantly, you probably can hear the angst in my voice about the St. Paul's project. We have 7,000 people, you know, that we, you know, on the drawing board. And I think we need to... It is not as, I guess you say, as close or palatable as we want it to be. We, you know, we just don't know what's going on over there. Now Angela might have an opinion as to what's going on. But I don't think the average citizen in Norfolk knows what's going on. I continue to say that I don't think it's fair to let these guys come in from Chicago and other areas and say they can't find minorities and walk away, you know, with a fistful of dollars. And I think that this council should make sure that minorities participate. Now, we had that Ohio project and not one minority participated in moving dirt. And I asked, you know, the lady who was running it, you know, who was running it, said he couldn't find a minority, you know? And it's just strange to me that these guys and women who have these companies come in and say they can't find minorities. And then when they do, they stack the deck. And I think that we should all, you know, make sure that the African-American gets a part of that. You guys don't care about it, that's fine. But I'm going to always be somebody beating the drum. I see Norfolk going back to where it was 30 years ago when I became a member of council. I was... There was a day going sewer break across the street from me. And here it is again today. I see all black guys out there working and a white guy sitting in a truck doing nothing. That was at O'Keefe and Washington Avenue. So finally, just sitting there. One of the black guys working could have driven the damn truck up there, you know? And I just see us, you know, I see the hiring. In a lot of instances, it might not be the directors, but it's the second level of people who are being enhanced and not doing the job. And last year, you guys had a reduction in force and it was punitive. So if you have a reduction in force and you got a white guy sitting there doing nothing, then that's the job that should go, you know? And I really get annoyed. And I'm probably the only panther in the room. But I really get annoyed when I see, you know, what's going on and I see where Norfolk is going back and how the rest of you on council are allowing it to go back, you know? You might not have a history of it. But I'm not making this stuff up. This stuff is real, you know? Maybe we get to the retreat, we can just have a full-fledged discussion, you know, about auditing certain departments, utilities, public works, economic development. And there was another one I had down here, yeah, the budget department, you know? I got a guy in my ward, Doug Smith dedicated $450,000 to this particular part of Church Street. This man owns his property. He's gone through the planning commission and everybody else and has passed. And nothing has happened. And so the economic development is not interested in the little, small black companies. It doesn't look like it. That's why I want to find out what's going on. This guy has everything that he needs to be successful, you know? And I just can't understand it. So we'll talk more at the retreat, but you can tell that I'm sort of, you know, over it.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes?
Mr. Riddick, there's an opportunity as... For us, I think we're revisiting the casino project, as was discussed on December 19. We're not going to sign the intergovernmental agreement. And we're going to be working on a land option only. In the intergovernmental agreement, there was reference to hiring of Norfolk and minority contractors. But it has no teeth. It has no numbers. It has no specifics. So there's no opportunity for us to actually measure it. And I would suggest that we go and look at the MGM contract, which has an employment agreement that had specific goals and numbers for deliverables of Norfolk residents that are hired for the project and of minority contractors that would be used for the project. So that we can go back and say, more than we'll do to the best of our efforts, which is what it currently reads, which has no teeth, to have something that actually has specific numbers that we can go back to. Mr. Riddick, I hope you'd support me in that.
Well, yeah, I mean, because I have different thoughts about casinos, man. I think, I wrote all of you, I think we need to put an aquarium there, you know? And that's way out of line with what the majority is. I'm just wondering, are we going to be oversaturated with casinos, you know?
Well, I hope that's an opportunity to talk about it for the retreat as well.
Okay. Mr. Thomas?
I'm good, thank you.
Good. All right, Mr. Bull?
I move that members of the council assemble in formally enclosed meeting on January 7, 2020, at 5:03 PM in the 10th floor conference room of the City Hall Building in City Hall for the purposes which are set out in Clause 3 of subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended. Clause 3, discussion of the possession of publicly held property in the Princess Anne Ingleside Roads area. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?